No, there's no, I mean, I looked through it. It was like basic stuff.
Yes, we can.
You're around.
Looks like she's having it all.
I know, I want to go down.
I have to re-record that sentence. My friend Marilyn is getting married. And so we're having a big party because we're not going to. Sarah Walkie, she's part of my walking group.
Oh, cool.
Well, she is here.
She's here.
I'm here. I'm unfortunately back in the United States too, but I tested positive for COVID, so I am. I, yep, Sheldon and I both couldn't catch a break. I blame Denmark.
Wow. Are you feeling okay?
Yeah, luckily I feel fine. I have no symptoms. I just took a test as a precaution and yeah.
That was the same with me.
We'll get better.
Yes, get better.
I didn't think you'd ever come out.
I really didn't want to, but since the election was uncontested, I guess I'll, I'll guess I'll be here.
I still look amazing.
Yeah.
You ready? Okay. All right, calling the meeting to order at 4:01. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
All right, um, next item, adoption and approval of the agenda.
So, we're gonna, what's the number here, Tony?
Nine, twelve.
Right. No, where is the overnight field trip?
Action.
Explain.
It's online.
Oh, I saw it.
Yeah.
It's seven point three point one.
Yeah.
There it is. So we're, the, um, the coach requested that we pull that one, which is not, they're not going to go, it's too short notice. Or whatever reason, they were, so I'd like to just pull seven point three point one.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I moved to pull seven point three point one, the overnight field trip for the tennis team.
A second.
Call in favor.
Hi.
All right.
So I move to approve the agenda as adopted, as amended.
Second.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Okay. All right, uh, public hearing, is this, um, Jason or who's doing this public?
So, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna open it, open it, and we're gonna ask any, any public comment, kind of public feedback, and then we'll close, close the, uh.
So why don't we open the chat for this? Um, if anyone who's in attendance has any comments about the public hearing, it's contract reopeners with, uh, Petaluma Federation of Teachers and Petaluma City and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts for a professor agreement. If there's anyone here or online, leave it open for about a minute. All right, we can close the chat. And it looks like there's no one person, so that will close the public hearing. All right, um, next up, announcement of the new assistant principal at Petaluma High School.
Okay. So. There we go. Like to, I'm very pleased to announce our new assistant principal at Petaluma High School, Rebecca Cronin. You go Rebecca.
Yeah.
Okay. We're excited to announce Rebecca Cronin as the new assistant principal of Petaluma High School. Rebecca, Rebecca will assume her duties on September first, two thousand and twenty-two. Becca graduated from Sonoma State University with a degree in human development and a minor in business, early childhood education, and psychology. She stayed at Sonoma State to earn her teaching credential. Rebecca started her teaching career in San Jose at August Burger, Burger, sorry, middle school, where she taught for three years before moving to Sonoma County. And she's been teaching at Lawrence Jones Middle School in Roanoke Park for the past four years. During her time at Katari Roanoke Park, USD, Rebecca was involved with ASV, School Site Council, and whole school climate with the PBIS team. She is avid trained and served as department chair. She's been nominated for Teacher of the Year, received the Golden Apple Award, and received the Most Tech Savvy Teacher Award. Becca looks forward to joining the team at Petaluma High School and getting to know the incredible staff. She's excited about the new opportunities and responsibilities this change will bring. She is passionate about being a positive force in the lives of students and hopes to make an impact with the students at Petaluma High. She loves finding ways to bring different cultures into school events and lessons, and hopes to focus on college and career readiness opportunities and experiences for our students. Becca grew up in Marin and Sonoma Counties and attended Tara Linda High School. She currently lives in Santa Rosa with her four-year-old daughter Riley Frances. She's a fan of the Forty Niners, Giants, and Warriors, but we won't hold that against her. Becca is a big reader and loves camping, going to the beach, and coming up with new adventures to explore with her family. Please join us in congratulating Becca Cronin and joining the Petaluma High School team as their newest assistant principal.
Welcome. I have not spoken at very many board meetings, so this is new for me, but I just want to take that opportunity to thank you guys. I'm really excited to be a part of the Petaluma community and work for Petaluma City Schools. I'm very excited to be joining such an amazing administrative team. They've been so welcoming, and I haven't even started yet. And I just can't wait to see what the school year brings for us. So again, thank you.
Right.
Feel, yeah, feel free to thank you guys.
Thank you. Um, comments from the public on consent items. Anyone in the public or online has any comments on the consent agenda? Please put your first and last name in the chat. While the chat's open, I'll read the public comment policy. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing that relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we will listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Do we have any comments? No. Okay, so let's close the chat. Um, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, does anyone have any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? Oh, Chris.
I just want to note, two of these items are related to the.
The passive.
Yes, the infrastructure, which we're gearing up to go up to bid for the actual construction, but we're ordering this equipment ahead of time because it's a long lead item, so this is very exciting because we're really starting to gain traction moving forward with that, so. Especially since we have a lot of electric buses, getting some chargers is a good thing.
And then Chris, can you tell like thirty seconds about McDowell, the, the principal?
For the child development center. Oh, yes, you know, we went out to bid, um, last spring, and the bids came in quite high, well over budget. And so what we did is we re-engineered, we looked at it, um, went back out to bid, knowing we have more flexibility in the fall to not have such a tight schedule. Um, so we're super excited about moving forward with this, um, project as well. Uh, we're working with our partners at Forests, and we're hoping to open that preschool backup come January first, thereabouts. So we're super excited about that project too, thank you. Um, anyway, it's been a long time, and just to recall, we have grants for both of those. We have a nine hundred thousand dollar grant for the, um, infrastructure for the buses. And we have, um, a grant that supports the childcare or the preschool, because it's a fully integrated special education preschool with Forests Regular Ed.
That's excellent. Highly, highly inclusive preschool starting in January.
That's wonderful. And this is for most of the interior work, getting the building basically ready to go. We'll be looking at, um, doing site work separately, um, and we're already working on finding fully inclusive sandboxes and equipment and other things so we can have our, our, um, students really being together and feeling like they're included, regardless of ability. That's amazing.
That's great.
Thank you.
Right, anything else? Right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, uh, comments from the public on non-agendized items. Leave the chat open for about a minute or so. All right, we can close the chat. Comments from the public on action items. Never mind, Dave. Okay. All right, action items.
Jason's not here.
Oh, okay. Matthew.
Sure. This is a provisional internship permit for Brooke Santander, with a famous mother who also works here in the district. Shelley Santander, to, to, to teach, um, specialty class across the ground. So she'll get an intern.
Well, I move to to approve the provisional internship.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, comments from the public on discussion slash information items.
And so, and so I just, I will say here, we, we can take comments now, that's great. And then when we get down to, um, twelve point three, under educational services, we're gonna give an update on the new, um, state funding opportunities. And we've kind of designed it as, as much as we could, like, uh, a board study session, so we'll give an update. I mean, Tony will do an update, potentially some support from Chris. And then, um, well, point three point two, we'll give some, the public another chance to give some comments. Because that, that way, so like, they can give comments before they have any background, so let Tony give the, the presentation. Then we'll let the public do some comments while the board can then discuss, because this is more of a study session format that we're, we've got on the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yeah. All right, so it looks like there's no one to comment on, on this section so far, so let's move on. Um, item twelve point one point one, se- second reading of the Board Governance Handbook and Calendar. Does anyone have any comments or anything?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks really good.
That's great.
I like that we have, you know, revised it based upon what we accomplished last year, uh, moving forward.
Add anything else? Yeah. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the next meeting under action, under consent.
Okay.
And then the office hours.
Yes, so I, I can tell you already, I, one of, one of the hours I signed up for, I already have to redo, so is this a live document that we can continually change? Okay, good.
I'm also, since I'm retired, I will pick up the hours where there's nobody there. I think there's about three of them.
That's what we're wondering, so if you want to fill this in, if there, if there's any spot where someone can't go, we'll change, we can, we can make a change and.
Yeah, I'm pretty.
I just want to tell sites when, you know, to make sure that.
Yeah.
So do you want us to tell you, you know, like, because there's one on here, I, I don't know why I signed up for it. I can't do Wednesday.
Yeah, you can tell us, right?
You know, so.
Just change it on the.
You just go on the Google.
You want me to just do it on the Google back?
Yeah.
And then I'll just look on it and pick up the ones where there's nobody there.
That way we can let the public, let the sites know here's the date, then you'll have one or two. Okay.
Cool, all right.
I just want to make sure if there's somewhere where, where no one can go, that we, we have to change it.
Yeah.
Sites, let the sites, let the public know.
But I checked them out before the meeting, and it looks like I can pick up those. There's only about three. You're signed up for a month too. I mean, I hope you, Ellen. And I enjoyed it. Again, Debbie worked. I just.
All right, um, update on new state funding opportunities.
So, so just again, just sort of the format for every, just make sure it's clear, everybody, we're gonna, um, Tony, who is gonna do the, the presentation, should, fairly brief presentation. Then we will, you know, we'll have public comment, and then I'll really allow the board just a chance for board members to give some direction or some inputs, feedback, hey, you know, now that I have a little bit more understanding of this funding, here's really where we want to focus and sort of, you know, as I shared, my recommendation will be, let's get, let's get a committee together, and let's start moving some of this work forward. We'll talk about that at the end, Tony, talking about the, the presentation. And the work will really be with the committee, but bringing it back to the board in late November, or sort of December timeframe, I think is what we're thinking. But right now is the, our board members' opportunities to say, here's, we want you to make sure that this happens, or just give us some, some input right now, after we present.
Uh, thank you, Matthew. So this is really exciting time for, uh, for education with this, um, new funding. Uh, so as you may know, on June thirtieth, the governor signed, um, I think it was a three hundred and eight billion dollar budget package. And a part of that package went towards increasing funding for education by increasing the base, uh, funding for LCFF. Um, in addition, that there were also increases in the ongoing funding for expanded learning opportunities program and additional funding, uh, on one-time grants that we will discuss, um, in this presentation. There are also other grants that, that may be coming through, but, um, for the purpose of this presentation, we will, um, share with you, um, what we, what we're receiving.
And we're sharing these three because these are the three that we know about right now. There may be more, there may be different things, but these are the ones that we know right here and right now.
Yeah, so the two additional one-time grants, uh, um, that, in addition to the expanded learning is the, uh, Learning Recovery Block Grant and the Arts Music Instruction Materials Discretionary Block, uh, Grant. So the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, the ELOP, uh, the purpose, uh, is intended to support before and after-school enrichment programs for TK through sixth-grade students. Some of the acceptable use, uh, of this, uh, funding is to, um, really, um, provide programming for, uh, before and after-school, uh, during intercessions and summer school enrichment, uh, opportunities. And again, it's applied, uh, for TK through sixth grade. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, estimated revenue of one point seven million, and this is ongoing. Uh, in some, uh, going into some details about the allowable use, uh, it's intended to, uh, complement, expand the current programs, uh, such as ACES. It's before and after-school programming, uh, intercessions and summer school enrichment. So we have to do a thirty, a minimum of thirty, um, days of intercession, uh, that's required, uh, that's including, uh, summer school.
So, Tony, just, just on that point, so, uh, typically we do summer school nineteen or twenty days of summer school. So we'll continue to do that, and then we also need to come up with, we've been, uh, JJ Linter, coordinator after, after-school coordinator is here. We've been talking about, um, and some of the, some of the pushback on even the calendar was with this, you know, the spring break and then the emergency shutdown. It's a lot of families, we've been talking a lot about how do we, how do we have, maybe even that winter, that second week of winter break, the spring break with the, or the emergency shutdown. Let's plan at least ten or so days of intercession so that families, you know, families who are working families can bring their children to school for a minimum nine-hour day, which is what we're required to do. Plus, we'll add on the summer school, so the idea is to give as many additional days as we possibly can, but we have a minimum requirement of thirty additional days for that, that time period.
Can we also use that money to, um, extend? The childcare we already have, for example, when I was at McDowell, they don't have an AM childcare, and they removed it, so is that a good use of that money?
Yeah, before, before and after school program, yeah.
Awesome.
McDowell, isn't it, of course?
I learned that when I went back to school.
Actually, we did expand it for TK and K a couple of years ago where they do have before-school options, so if they don't, that's a change.
Yeah.
We'll have to look into that.
When I was there, I went and talked to the people who were, were manning the Boys and Girls, and they were saying that that was an issue, that kids were getting dropped off, and there was nobody around.
So we'll, we'll take a look at that, but to answer your question specifically, the intent of this is to, um, expand our current learning opportunities, so it's not to have standalone, it's to really say, how do we work with our partners to continue to support and expand those offerings, so it's not about setting, creating separate programs, other than the intercession, so absolutely.
So Boys and Girls Club are one of our partners, right?
Absolutely. And we actually provide them with additional funding over and above the ACES grant to provide additional care over the number of slots available for ACES at McDowell. So we actually provide, last year it was sixty-seven thousand dollars. This year, I think we're still trying to fine-tune the dollar amount, but, but that absolutely should be in place. But to, to answer your question, it is actually to work with our current partners and expand those offerings.
That's perfect.
And so JJ, you know, what, her, her role, she's gonna be helping us to coordinate this grant, one point seven million dollar grant, making sure that we have before-school, after-school programming, enter the minimum thirty days intercession slash summer school, um, enrichment. Working with those partners to Chris's point, we have Boys and Girls Club, we have YMCA, we have, uh.
We have men from years.
Just mentioning.
Champions.
Champions.
What?
Mentor me?
No.
Yes, Steve.
No, they're not currently.
They're not.
It doesn't mean we, it doesn't mean we can't, but the current partners that are providing after-school programs that qualify are Champions, YMCA, and the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, and so JJ is working with our partners there and helping to provide enhancement.
So it, it is new, it, it was going to be six hundred thousand dollars, that's what we had built in based on the twenty-one, twenty-two grant. But then the governor's budget, the final proposal increased it from about six hundred thousand to about one point seven million.
I, I guess, I'm sorry, they're requiring, are these new, or some of them are new and some of them are, like, the increase of the, the thirty day.
No, I don't believe so. That was part of the original six hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, ELO, which is what this is called, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, is different than the Extended Learning, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant that we got one-time COVID money.
Oh, my God, you're kidding.
No, so there's an E.
I'm sorry. I totally thought that's what.
No, this is separate. There was an Extended Learning Opportunities COVID Grant.
Which is left turn.
Yes, and this, then they came out with for twenty-one, twenty-two, Elo dash G.
Yeah, Elo G is the one time, Elo P is continued.
Yeah, so the grant was the one time we got under COVID, the program is the ongoing. So it creates even more confusion because there was this Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant that we received, um, and now this. We used a lot of that for like the academic learning cohorts, and so anyway, it's a little bit confusing. I don't know why they named it exactly the same thing.
Well, they changed the initial.
But there are other requirements that Tony's gonna walk you through, so.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's good. I tend to go fast sometimes, so thanks for slowing me down. Some of the parameters is that, you know, this pro, this ELOP is meant to support unduplicated people, uh, students that we have. Um, there's an administrative overhead, um, that's capped at fifteen percent. Uh, it can be used to support salary and benefits for internal staff and/or contracts with agency partners to provide services, um, which is encouraged by the CD. And again, it applies to all, uh, TK through six, uh, schools. Uh, it also, uh, provides people transportation, um, for students, uh, uh, that is not offered at their school of attendance, but we're offering at all school sites. Right, so it's, that shouldn't be an issue. Um, other requirements, uh, quality standards is that the ELOP will be included in future program reviews, so, um, this, uh, could be a part of our FPM in the future. Uh, it must be implemented, um, we must implement a continuous quality improvement, um, model. Uh, we're developing that currently, and, um, the program plan, uh, that's in process now, um, it's a one-year plan. Uh, and that will be our base, uh, for us to then develop a three-year plan. And, um, we'll need board approval, so we will, um, ideally bring it up, uh, at the September thirteenth, for, uh, board meeting for approval. And I know, um, JJ and Esmeralda and I will be, uh, making sure that that's ready to go. Um, and then review findings with key stakeholders to draft a three-year plan, um, after we've, um, gone through that first year, kind of, uh, audit findings that we'll, we'll have from that first-year plan. This is the Expanded Learning, uh, Opportunities Grant kind of budget. I don't know, if Chris wants to expand on this a little bit.
Yeah, so as you know, we're five different organizations, and we have to account for those separately. So we know we've got, um, this is for an elementary setting, so the high school district does not qualify, PAX does not qualify. So when we're talking about expanded learning, uh, after-school opportunities at McKinley, we're really talking about focusing on TK, this is great, not PAX. It doesn't mean we couldn't have something for PAX, but it couldn't be funded with this money. And then also just to know, we have to account for Cherry Valleys and Cherry Valley and Pangrove and Pangrove. So you can see it is about one point seven million. Um, and that's based on preliminary information, so we're using the best information that we have right now. That could change up or down, but we think it'll be approximately this amount.
And that does include.
Does not include live vote, they get their own funding directly.
So, so for this grant, I think, you know, we're working on a plan, bringing it September, a one-year plan, and then the idea is getting this, getting this movement for this year for that after-school, and then working with our partners, parents, families who are involved, and, and um, getting that input and bringing back a three-year plan, you know, at a later time.
But I also want to restate one of the things Tony mentioned in the last slide, which is this is intended to support the free and reduced, that unduplicated population of students, free, reduced meal, foster youth, EL, et cetera, homeless. But that's what we mean by a seamless program. We want all kids to participate in a program, and then we would help to offset the cost for those students.
So, uh, question on this.
So, question on this, so thinking about the, you know, Gina's old job with the community, family and community engagement. During the pandemic, that was COVID funded and as a result, we had programming for the entire district.
Yes.
And this is limited to K six. So would that kind of district-wide activities be off the table for this funding?
Oh, for this funding, we're, that, so that's what we'll continue. So we have Saranya Shresk, Shreskabar, I think that's how she pronounced it. She's in that role right now. She's also the interim over at Grant. Right, so we're doing more, more, more of a skeleton minimal amount of these, these events in the fall. But in the spring, all lots of those events will be coming back district-wide, funded out of, out of our COVID.
We still have.
For twenty three, twenty, for twenty two, twenty three, but you're right theoretically.
Down route.
That will be, that will be going away. It's one time in nature. This is ongoing. And to answer your question specifically, yes, it can fund some things that are across the district, across like JJ's position as an example of that. In which we're taking a piece of each grant to fund that administrative overhead and programming. But we can't use it broadly to pick up like high school students or junior high. And we have to target it to the students that qualify and that are generating the funding, so.
But we should theoretically use it for, you know, putting on the events. The family engagement events that we've had.
I don't think so. This is really after school programming. This is extended learning opportunities. No, that was really enrichment for kids to do at different times, but this is like, more like childcare.
Yes, yeah, those are like Saturday.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay, but yeah, great question, but we are gonna be continuing that with different funding sources.
Okay, so moving on to the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grants. So the purpose of this grant is to extend some of the pandemic relief spending for increased instructional minutes, closing the learning gap and credit recovery. So this is one-time pandemic relief grant. Some of the acceptable uses for it is to, is included, includes supporting learning recovery, social and emotional well-being, increasing, stabilizing instructional time, decreasing, decreasing or stabilizing staff to pupil ratios. Closing learning gaps, integral, integrating people's supports and providing staff support and training. Funds provided based on the district's UPP percentage. And funds must be spent by the end of twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, so about five or six years to, to use the the anticipated revenue, which is a six point five million.
So we think about it in terms of approximately one million dollars per year, 1.1 million.
Mr. Reese. Just to restate, I mean, it's, this one is a little bit more academic focused. Like it could be to reduce staff to pupil ratios, it could be used to, for other academic services for credit deficient students to address that. So it's really an academic focus versus the other one, which is more aftercare.
And this is TK twelve.
So I have a quick question. So when we talk about decreasing staff to pupil ratios, if we do that, once the money runs out, can we keep, are we gonna be able to keep those decreases going or? That's a huge concern if we, if we do something and it works and everybody's happy with it and then all said, oh, we don't have the money anymore, so.
Well, the intent of these funds is really to address learning loss from the pandemic.
Okay.
That's the intent of these funds. I can't comment on whether we'll have, what type of funding will be available in twenty eight, twenty nine, seems like so long. But this could be used to, to support additional sections at the secondary level, for example, to reduce class size, to give more offerings, whether it's zero period or seventh period, however that works. So, and this is, if you go to the funding screen, which Tony just set up, you can see this is a significant amount of money. It's, it's six point five million. And you can see the biggest generator of the money is the, is the high school district.
Yeah.
So that's almost four point four million specifically for our comprehensive high schools and our alternative education program, so. But again, as Matthew said, we've got quite a bit of years that we can spread this over to kind of look at how we can best utilize the funds to address learning loss.
But I mean, you're right, you're right, Ellen, does it scare you to start to add staff, right? And you think about, oh, what, but so five to six years from now, things are working and we have to at that point, we need to re-figure out what, what do we, how do we need to retarget the money that we do have? There could be some other grant that comes out in five or six years, but the point is the money that we receive right now from the state is additional money is intended to be spent on students right now at this time. And of course, a five to six year grant, you split it over five to six years, approximately, you know, per year.
You're gonna hit electric.
Yes.
Are there some examples of the staff support and training?
Can you go back on this slide?
Oh, the, providing staff supports and training. So it, like professional development that we may need to provide. So it could be things that we're doing with UDL, for example, Universal Design for Learning, or it could be instructional strategies, differentiated instruction to help ways, different ways of, of teaching students who may need that, that recovery or maybe the traditional classroom didn't work for them and the credit recovery time, we can use a different strategy, so those trainings to update teachers on some of the strategies that could help students recover.
Would Abbott fall under that?
Potentially, yeah, it could. Our A through G grants can also support that as well, so.
And our educator, educator effectiveness. I mean, the, the challenge really becomes, we have a lot of money that has come to the district. This is three of many grants. We have a lot of career tech ed money, a lot of educator effectiveness money, a lot of other money. And so we're, we're kind of weeding our way through all of these grants so that we can maximize the use of them. And the educator effectiveness, it's like a five or six year grant as well. So because we have that all for professional development and knowing that we might want to target this more to those academic supports for students versus professional development. And we also have Title II funding, so it's really, you know, we're gonna have to do it takes a lot more work to kind of take a look at all of these in relationship to each other and kind of design a plan for all of it. Can, can you go back to the previous slide? I just want to pause and ask Julian or Alan if you guys have any questions or comments so far about anything. This is really. Okay. All right, that was I just wanted to.
Okay, the Arts Music Instructional Materials discretionary block grants. This grant is intended to be flexible and it funds a broad range of, under the umbrella of arts, music and instructional materials. It is one-time funding. The acceptable use includes professional development, instructional materials, operational costs and COVID-related expenditures. It does require board-approved plan prior to any expenditures. And funds are available for in conference through the end of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, so about four years. We anticipate estimated revenue of four point four million, and this again, one-time funding.
Could we use this to develop a new CTE, say, in visual and performing arts?
Possibly, but we have, you know, we're, we have a lot of CTE funds, a different grant that will support that, which will be more ongoing.
Okay.
Where this is more of a one-time funds. So I think the challenge, like Chris was saying, is we have a lot of these funds and you know, the worst thing we could do is misuse it. So we really want to be strategic about how we spend it and, and make it strategic so that we can maximize the benefit using the funds for, for things that, that, you know, that makes sense for one time to help start things up. And it could help support some of the CTE pathways that we want, especially in the arts and music. And then how we infuse our, our CTE grants to make that ongoing and continuing. But, you know, all those things I think will be important and the input that you, you provide will be important for that.
Can you go back one side again, Tony? So just to put it in broad terms again, it's to be used over approximately four years. So if you think of it, we slice it up, it's about 1.1 million over four years.
Real. It's really over three years because the, the, the first year is twenty one, is twenty two, twenty three. And we have to develop a plan before we can even contemplate spending funds. So really, it's like a three and a half year program. And we're gonna have to kind of keep that in mind too. The, the really, the beauty of what the state has done versus what they did with COVID is that they're giving us time to have a well-thought-out plan. And I think that's kind of the overarching message for all three of these grants is that we have time to plan it, get stakeholder input, have a good process, and then hire for it, if that's part of the plan. But really, I see these dollars starting to work effectively in twenty three, twenty four. Because by the time we have a plan, get it approved, contemplate hiring, we're looking at next spring. And so it's really more like a three, three and a half year plan, just to kind of keep that in mind. And Tony's also really right, we, we have, there are so many grants that have come our way because we've been so fortunate. Both from the state and the federal level and the work that Ed Services and others have done to get these career ticket grants and others. But my concern is that we have all this money and we have to really sit down and kind of see how all of these pieces fit together in a puzzle. And, and Tony just said it to be strategic about how we maximize these dollars, the port, support students for the maximum amount of time we can. Because it is for this year's students, but it's also to address learning loss over the next four, five, six years for those kids that were impacted. So it's just, it's a lot of money. And this is three, three pieces of it. So I think as we gather input on what's important to the board and the community, we may have to go back and then take a look at our other funding sources and kind of wrap it into a bigger plan. So.
So on that note, Chris, the last block grant was six years, you know, and the conceptually, it was targeting, it is targeting pandemic relief, so that makes sense. You were suggesting that this one also has, oh, it said, okay, I'm just reading it now, COVID-related expenditures, okay.
If you go to the next slide, we kind of, we kind of articulated a little bit better, we kind of put a little bit more meat on the.
These are. You want to talk to that, Tony, this slide?
Yeah, there are some other allowable uses for this particular grant, because it is kind of broad and flexible. It allows for professional development and instructional materials related to best practices around improving school climate. Digital literacy, physical education and learning through play, arts and music programs, diverse book collection and culturally relevant materials, operational costs, include things like offsetting pers and stirs contributions. And then of course, COVID nineteen costs such as testing PPE infrastructure related to ventilation, et cetera, and then this is the kind of the breakdown of that cost. I don't know anything worth expanding on that, Chris.
That's amazing, pers and stirs.
Yeah, that's really great.
Pretty flexible.
They specifically called it out too. I mean, we're looking at, you know, what this, it's kind of oddly named art, music and instructional materials. But when you really dive into the, what it allows, it is designed to be super flexible. And also just remind the district and the board that we don't have any instructional materials funds other than Prop twenty lottery. So the whole IMFRP instructional materials realignment program from pre-recession era, all of that went the way of the dodo as relates to the LCFF, so we don't get any unique funding. And we have quite a bit of, you know, textbooks and, and even digital textbooks are not cheap. So I think we all thought, oh, we're gonna go to digital, but the publishers got smart and said, oh, seventy five dollars a textbook, seventy dollars for digital textbook. So the cost is still pretty high, whether it's digital or paper.
As we're discussing how to use these funds, are we gonna talk also about the other grants that would be pulled into them or supplement them so that we kind of had a, a really good idea about exactly what we would.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we focus on our needs and not look at the money per se. And then once we know what our needs are, then we can say, okay, well, what, where, what buckets will we pull from to support it? And what will be something that we do year one, year two, year three, as it starts to layer and build on itself? As opposed to looking at the money and trying to figure out how to spend it.
No, I agree with you to look at, to look at our needs and then look at the buckets, but we, we've, we see three buckets here, and I'm just curious about the other one.
Yeah, so whether we pull in the A through G grant, S or EBG grants, and the other grants that might be coming down the pipeline. You know, we want to make sure that we'll be strategic about which, which buckets will be used from, based on what needs we have our current year or what needs we anticipate having it next three or four years, as well some, maybe some of the wants based on, you know, how much funding we're receiving, so.
We know the governor just announced a mental health grant that's gonna be coming to districts. We don't know in our portion.
That's great.
Massive amount of money for mental health. So there, there, it's still coming out. We have, we don't have all the information yet.
Okay, well, and even on these three grants, I mean, Tony and I were sitting down going on to the California Department of Education website, trying to see, is there any better detail out to answer questions that we knew you would have? And there's almost nothing on the CDE's website. I mean, the materials we've received and JJ's participation in the, at the state level, the committees that she attends as it relates to Elo. You know, that's where we're getting our information. So my guess is that they're working at the state level, providing greater clarification. And that's what happened with the COVID dollars. I mean, we had to come up with this plan and then they came out three, four, five months later and said, oh, by the way, here's how you have to report and this is really what you can spend it on. So that's my concern is that we don't even have all the details yet of what, of what the requirements are gonna be, the reporting requirements, and how do we track all this stuff? So I think that there will be greater clarification. This is kind of giving the district and the community an idea of what, how much money we're getting in for what, so we can start having that conversation, but that's why a stakeholder process is gonna be important. And that we gather more information as it becomes available, because it may change a little bit how this ends up looking.
Are either of these two block grants competitive such that we need to act fast or they're pretty much entitled and, okay, good.
So which leads into our next steps and just to reiterate what Superintendent Harris was talking about. We want to develop a plan on how to best spend the new funds. We want to include our community partners in, in giving us input and, and what, what the community would like to see, as well as, you know, our, our staff and, and, you know, district leadership to help kind of formulate what this plan should look like moving forward. I imagine if they are living documents and we can always continually improve or modify them every year as we reflect on them. And then we want to report back to the board periodically on the progress of development of these plans. And then formally adopt the, adopt the plans around December, January, on the first interim report.
Now, are we envisioning a plan for these three funding opportunities or separate plans for each?
I think we should have kind of a master plan, but I think some of the, it depends on the, the grant itself. It requires separate plan for board approval.
But for example, the Expanded Learning Opportunities, that needs to come sooner, sooner than later. I don't necessarily know we have time for a big process with that one. We have after-school partners who are ready to go.
Ready to go. Well, and that one, that one, it doesn't have a lot of discretion. I mean, that, the Elo really is very targeted, very specific. And we're already working on that. That was a twenty one, twenty two program that we've already been working on. I think that the plan is really, the art, music, instructional materials block grant has to have a unique plan.
Yes.
But I agree with Tony that I think there needs to be a broader vision where we're not just these two plus the Elo, but actually bringing in EBG, you know, the educator effectiveness and some of our other federal and state funding.
Yeah.
Like career tech ads that people can see how they all intersect and support each other.
One process for all these guys and separating the process.
Or at least having the data, like the process will then, if someone says, oh, we should have this for career tech ed, we can say, well, and we've got this funding over here and you kind of, you know, tie that plan in to this bigger plan. Because there, there is a lot of money and at the end of the day, by these days, we have to spend it all. And ironically and sadly, in some ways, we're better at cutting program than we are at money. I mean, I, I'm just gonna say that from a lot of years of experience. It's just really hard to actually envision and, you know, given staffing shortages, like substitute shortage, like the EBG. It's just really hard to actually envision and, you know, given staffing shortages, like substitute shortage, like the EBG. It's great to say, yeah, we have this money for professional development, but people are worn out. People don't want to come in over the summer. People, you know what I mean? And then we can't get subs to do it during the day. So it's just, it's just an issue we have to keep in mind.
We're in queue positive, we all this money. Yeah, and so now we have to start, kind of start visioning. And so I know that in fact, I, you know, again, this process really we want to hear from Caitlin and Maddie, Ellen, Julian, Sheldon, Joanna. Your sort of ideas or things that you want to bring. I've also invited Karen McGee, former principal at Cherry Valley School of Sco. Yeah, Omira is here as Omira.
Cobra.
Cobra, sorry. But as well, just to start, you know, and there are a couple people who are online. I know that we, we want to get a, have a robust group of partners who are actively interested in working on a, on a, on a plan for some of the money. Love to have a couple of our student board members if they're interested in joining a couple of our board members who want to be, who want to be part of it. I know our, I know PFT is very interested in having several teachers. We'd love to have some, some parents, some families, community members, you know, you know, a couple, I said a couple of student board members or even a couple of their students and, and come together, whether, you know, it's three, four meetings, sort of a timeframe before December. Once December comes, we can then bring back a plan that hopefully reflects some of the priorities that you're going to share with us right now. And have a couple of board members on the committee so that it's, you know, we want it to meet your expectations or what, what your desires are.
And I would just add one last piece to keep in mind. We do have a lot of COVID money coming to an end.
Right.
June of twenty three.
Right.
And so there's a lot of staff and positions like reading specialists that we've expanded from point five to one point O. And so I, I just want to say that there's a lot of that over there, too, that we're already doing well, that the question is, how do we measure that success? How do we measure the effectiveness of that? Because there's a whole bunch that's going to come to an end June thirtieth. And I think that some of these monies are going to help us contemplate that, the stuff that's being really effective. How can we continue it?
So why wouldn't we, I'm just, I'm not prescribing here, I'm just throwing out a question. Why wouldn't we lean on the processes we have already, particularly LCAP? I'm thinking, you know, LCAP is that opportunity where we express what, what values we want to promote in our district. And, and what I really am taking away from this presentation of these three new funding opportunities is these are pots of money, you know, they're not, we're not going to build something new here, there, but they are substantial enough where we can really move the needle on some of our LCAP goals. And instead of thinking about where to cut down, like you're saying, Chris, what can we shore up? And, and particularly since some of them are specifically geared towards K six and then others for secondary. It seems to me that LCAP would be a starting point for the, for the, because they've already identified where the, where our targeted attention should be, should be put. The only pieces I'm thinking might be absent from LCAP would be our community partners, you know, Boys and Girls Club and those folks. But, you know, we have their teachers, staff, board, community, you know, parents, something like that.
I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it's a good idea. My only concern is the, is the timing. I mean, just having something coming, coming back to the board by December. You know, the, the reason, I guess the reason doesn't fishing for, but it could be same, be the same group as the LCAP. And, and with the addition of a few other members.
It could be a subcommittee to the LCAP, though. I mean, I think there may need to be a little bit of a deeper dive into not the ELOP, but the other two. But it does make sense to have it be tied to the LCAP and budget advisories committee process. But maybe, I think what concern is that we need more time to dive in and get the work done and roll up the sleeves. Maybe a smaller committee because you've got too many people. I, I don't, I don't.
Is what, I mean, typically LCAP gets started in October. It's, you know, meeting in November, meeting in December. So we have to get it going. We need to get, we need to go going soon. And yeah, and get it, get something completed to you by December. Okay.
But I think Sheldon's on a point because what, however, we develop these plans, we need to anchor it on something. And the board goals, the board goals that were developed by the board, I think, are what we anchor a lot of the decisions we make. How does this support those board goals?
I would only, my only hesitation is that it's a lot of the same people on all of our committees. And I really want to hear a lot of other voices, especially students, especially parents, community members, teachers. And, you know, I see a lot of the same people. And I, I, I just want to make sure that we have some venue at some point where we have a lot of input from a lot of different people that may not be always in the know, always involved. I mean, look at PTA, we could get, you know, like Sal had suggested, you know, a Google form, something where we really get some information from people. Maybe have it at a PTA agenda so that they can then take it to their people. I really want this because this is a lot of money. It, I think it's
Council as well.
And school site council, absolutely. Superintendent's lay advisory.
And one of the meetings could be a listening, if you could have a, you know.
Exactly, you know.
Have a comment forum.
Probably like creating a plan would be something LCAP small, but just to get what people are thinking about. Yes, I don't know. Maybe that's too much.
No, I, I think that's right.
It's pretty easy to set out a Google.
Some kind of a special, maybe a special session where it's, where everyone's invited and informs a smaller committee that can develop a plan that, that is, you know, anchored on LCAP. And I do think, I think, I do think somewhere along the line, probably a survey.
Yes.
And you guys could take it back to the schools and get some idea what student or even an online survey, which is very helpful. And to, and both in languages.
And I, I think to, the point is also that I don't know how aware people are that some of this other funding is coming to an end.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, that's, that's my concern is that we're going to get to March and there's going to be a lot of layoffs if we don't have an alternative plan in place. And so I think when we communicate out, we have to let people know, like, these are all the things that are currently being funded with one time monies. Because we have to have decisions in place by February so that we can address that one way or another. So that's my concern is that there's so much, the COVID money was also big and it's funded millions of dollars worth of staffing. And we need to kind of be able to help, help people understand that, like, it's not in addition to that. It's going to either replace some of that or it's going to support some of that.
Especially things like reading specialist, staff specialist.
Hey, do you want to, you guys want to have, have comments? Do you want to have public comments at this time?
Yeah, we can have public comments.
Yeah.
Um, Julian or Alan, do you guys have any comments on any of this or questions or anything that you'd like to see with this money that you can think of right now?
We're putting you on the spot.
You don't have to.
Yeah. I mean, just like one thing, which is just kind of, I'm trying to figure out, like, what's the one main concern with the whole budget that's being given out to you guys? Like, I could see there's divided into all these sections, but it's like, if you could kind of section it down to one main goal, that kind of be your one thing that you want to accomplish. Would you say that would be just like, is it like, help support everyone or to like, keep things going, create new things or bring things back up?
I think it would be above that, really.
That's a good question.
That's a great question.
To put it into one goal, you know, I think the closest thing we have is, is goal number one.
Yeah.
Every student is accessible.
Yeah. How do we do that? How do we use this money to move that goal forward?
Yeah. I mean, the three goals, if you break it down, you know, lots of components on your ongoing, that's be all students scholars, all of our students scholars who will experience excellent first actual education, that they have rich academic options, that they're engaged in their learning community, and that we as a district will sustain a long, long term sustainable and our mission organization. I think that's to me how I, how I would break it down. Everyone receives an excellent first actual education options and that they're engaged in their learning, in the learning community. Those are the three big goals.
And that should definitely guide the way we decide to spend this money.
Which is, point of luck.
Did you have something else to add? That was great.
Yeah, that was your thing. I was, do you like to hint like that?
Okay, any comments from the public on? All right, so the chat is open. If you have a comment virtually, please put your first and last name in the chat. If anyone in person would like to comment, you can just come up to a podium. Sounds like you have one to read. Yeah, Karen.
Yeah. So this was submitted by Sal Andropoulos. Dear PCS board members and administrators, I'm writing to submit a public comment under item twelve, three, two, on the eight twenty nine agenda regarding new state funding opportunities. My understanding from the August sixteenth board meeting budget presentation is that one of the main purposes of today's special board meeting is to consider ways to engage PCS community stakeholders in a process around how to allocate the approximately twelve million in state grant funding that PCS anticipates receiving under the new state budget and spending over the next three to six years. If that is correct, I want to send the following suggestions for the district to consider in beginning to determine how to best solicit public input and engage the PCS community regarding funding priorities in this context over the month ahead. Send out a Google form in multiple languages to PCS families, students, staff and community, similar to this one, which he links circulated by OAUSD last fall to solicit written impact. This can help make the community input process more accessible to folks who may not be able to attend stakeholder meetings. It can also be used as a means of asking individuals to indicate whether they would like to attend future meetings on this topic. Convene input stakeholder meetings at different times and or multiple cohorts as well in different formats, in person, online, hybrid, so as to make meeting access as equitable as possible. If possible, consider adjustments to be planned to the twenty two, two, twenty three schedules for LCAP, DLEC and BAC meetings that would align them to the extent that would be feasible or helpful with the input process pertaining to these additional funds. Engage students to the greatest degree possible in the process of assessing needs and soliciting input. Utilize social media in addition to other digital communications to disseminate announcements in multiple languages and perhaps a Google form like the one referenced above regarding the input process slash meeting schedules to families, students and community partners. Update the PCS website to include easily accessible information on the input process, including links to any applicable input forms, meeting schedules and documents memorializing community's input and district responses. Engage community partners that have been working closely with the populations most impacted by COVID nineteen to strategize regarding how to best seek input from and assess the needs of PCS families within these populations. And if funding allows, consider offering financial stipends or other incentives to parents slash caregivers who may face economic barriers to participation in meetings or the input process. Thank you, Sal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the public?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Omira and I'm a big arts education advocate. And I just want to give the arts a plug and say a robust arts education creates excellent opportunities for student engagement, social, emotional learning, opportunities for cross-cultural understanding and overall improving school climate. I hope we can assess what we're doing well with arts programming now and where the holes are. And with this money, hopefully create, think about creating a position for a visual and performing arts coordinator, really focusing on CTE pathways to and ways that we can create infrastructure for sustainable funding for future grants that I know are out there. I, I'm hoping I can be a partner with you guys and connect you with resources that I'm familiar with. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree fully.
Hi, I'm Karen McGee, former principal of Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. And I went to SCO. I'm now happily retired, but in my retirement, I'm getting to do a lot of things that I feel really passionate about. And, and that is the greatest thing. And one of the things that I'm on the board of the Arts Education Alliance of Sonoma County and am working with over since two thousand nineteen, when we, I'm going to give all of you a copy of this template that we wrote. We, it was a collaboration between Creative Sonoma and the Sonoma County Office of Education. And we have a team that we put together that worked with Peggy Bird, who was with Create California, to create our own arts education template. Since two thousand nineteen, I've had the privilege of working with schools and districts around the county to take this. We emptied this all out, so you'll get to see it all filled in. But we emptied it all out and then we adapt this to meet the needs of schools and districts. One of the things that, one, our, our first round of grants, McNear Elementary School got the grant and Liza Iker was principal there. Liza and I worked together at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. So it was nice simpatic, simpaticia. But one of the things that I found out, one of the things that we learned from that round, because we did several schools and we did Santa Rosa City Schools and West Side, but West Side is a one school district, right? And one of the things that we learned, I learned from McNear in particular, because when Melissa became principal there, I was so excited to hear Melissa was principal there. And so I called her to just connect and say, I'm really pleased for McNear that they've gotten you. She had no idea that this existed, none. And that's kind of what happens when you're working with the school side. Principals come and go. And unless there's some real lasting commitment to a plan like this, it goes by the wayside. And so we've decided, the Arts Education Alliance has decided specifically to work only with districts because we feel as if that will promote the sustainability that we need. There are four goals in the arts education. The first is arts teaching and learning. The second is arts leadership development. So we're not just talking about what exists here at the district office of that, that is really important. But we know that arts leadership rests in, sometimes in arts teachers and sometimes in principals. And so we want to make sure that we are developing that arts leadership at all levels, including community levels as well. And then the other goal is communication and advocacy. So we've got, we've got a committee that's part of the Arts Education Alliance and Omira is part of that, Arts Advocacy Committee. And that's really about how do we get out in schools and districts and advocate for the arts and, and communicate a lot of what Omira was talking about in terms of what is the importance of arts education? Why do we need that? And really communicating what, how important that is for students. And then the last is funding. And of course, when we, the funding part of this, we take all of those things into consideration, including the LCAP. So, you know, the LCAP is what we write into these plans. A lot of that really depends on how we write the language in the LCAP because often the language is really weak and then nothing really happens. So it's really about looking at the language that we put in the LCAP to give it help. And then we also talk about the roles in all of your title, title one, title three, title four, all of those titles can play in an arts education plan as well. So, um, anyway, you know, this is the work that I've been doing in my retirement happily and hoping that I get to continue to do the work here in my heart schools in Petaluma. And we, you know, we have this, but we also are doing work. I'm working, I'm just met in Catania Run Park with the superintendent there. And so we are in a grant cycle right now. The grants were released in June and they close in October. It's not, it's not a huge grant. It's like about seventy five hundred dollars. But this, but this year, it includes a lot of flexibility in how you can spend it. It also includes paying me to come in and be a consultant with your. It also includes paying me to come in and be a consultant with your district. So, um, and I, you know, work with some of the schools and districts I worked with over a six month period. We started in January and went until June, met once a week for six months to create this plan. And I did do some small districts. I did Guernville and Huracan. That was a trip. I did rural districts as well, and that was really, you know, I think it is what's really heightened for me is the inequities. That exist in our county, but if you look at it, it's the inequities that exist right here in Petaluma City Schools. And a lot of that goes to how we fund it, right? Because a lot of these schools, and I know Mary Collins School, I was also principal of Grant Elementary School. I know that we could fund, we could fund positions, we could fund all sorts of things that nobody else could fund. So that's an inequity, right? So we need to seek to address those inequities that that of access to arts education. So that's kind of, I'm going to give each one of you one of these little plans. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You might have one, but I'll take another one because I'm a member of the Arts Alliance, so.
Okay. Well, you know what? That's great. You can never have too many of these, right?
I agree.
You can hand it out to somebody else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, any other public comments? Do we have any online? No? Anyone else in person?
I. Question. Is it like with fundraisers? How much does that affect with like budgets and everything? Because I hear a lot about like over time just during this meeting like how. You get like fundings and stuff for grants and then they eventually go down, obviously. And then it's just like wondering, is there ways for like each schools to do like their own individual things to get money up to eventually build it up? Or is that not much playing much of a role with all that?
Well, lots of schools and clubs either do their own fundraisers. But, um, and they do fun things like field trips or whatever. But this is a little bit bigger than that. Those fundraisers are, you know, you make five thousand dollars and feel really lucky.
Yeah.
The PTAs can, you know, the problem is that there's an inequity in that. So as McGee was was commenting that you have schools that can raise tremendous amount of money. And and can pay for arts education and music education. And other ones that can't raise very much at all, and they're all within our district. And so there's an inequity there in terms of being able to offer in return. So and I. I know there's an answer to it, but.
Were you wondering about like a specific programs? I know you did bands. Were like, were there other programs that you were asked and wondering about specifically in terms of fundraisers? Or just overall?
Yeah, just overall.
Okay.
Julie, just the question is around. Help me understand what you're, help me understand the question. So it's around fun. How do some schools fundraise more than others or is it about?
Or like?
How do you fund?
Yeah, like does it, the fundraisers at the schools like that they do, like, does it help with budget stuff around in general?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to understate the impact of fundraising and the support of the community for each of our schools. And I would say that's across all of our schools. Our families are very committed and dedicated. To supporting their students and there is a gap in the level of fundraising that can't happen. But it certainly is essential to the programs that the schools offer. There's no doubt fundraising can make a big impact. I would also say that there's, and I think that you were kind of referring to that, there is. Opportunities for bigger money where you can actually go out and try to get larger donors. To donate to a specific cause like an art program. And so. That's really not typically at a school site level, although I've seen it at a school site level. I saw a principal get a donor of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support culinary arts in a different district. So I think that's where maybe the. Efforts need to be placed is how do we find those larger donors that can get behind a specific program that they're passionate about? I don't know that the schools have capacity to do a lot more fundraising than they already do, but it's definitely a critical part of their budget.
Kind of add something here. One of the things, Bob Bolwinkle, who was with the Preston County Office of Public Affairs Board, representing in Sonoma County, working as a consultant and arts consultant. Really said, you get those big art grants like CDE or NEA and things like that, you really need to have a plan. You need to have an arts education plan. They're looking for that and they're awarding those.
Okay, yeah, it's just because the reason I bring it up is just because of like that stuff as she mentioned. Just because it's like, oh, I see, you know, might not like get huge grants right away, but to just like start small. Like maybe get the name out and it's like, oh, if we got this much, like, imagine what we could do with more. And then just kind of getting the name like or the stuff that you're accomplishing like step by step till eventually you get bigger. The names are more ones or something like that available.
Or even matching funds, right?
Yeah.
A great example is the Anglers. They do this huge big fundraiser and they get a lot of big donations for people. And that goes a long way to supporting the program. So those fundraisers are great. And then you've got, you know, the smaller ones where they're just trying to raise money to. To go on a field trip so they still can. I mean, it's they go from the really intimate, smaller ones to the big ones. And the big donors are what will make those fly.
And I I would agree with Ms. McGee that it's a plan, but I also think before that it's a vision. When I've seen big donors come through in other lives, other districts. Somebody had a vision typically was a principal who had a vision of what they wanted from us. From that one, it was more of a capital improvement perspective, like how do we make this amazing culinary arts come alive? And then they were working on the plan at the same time, but a lot of times it's a vision and I know. Four years ago, the vision was a performing arts building and facility at Casa Grande. And. You know, so it may have to be partnered with something like that where we're looking at a bigger funding. Opportunity in a bond or something to support arts education from a. Wow, look at this amazing facility that's going to support performing arts in that particular case, but. So it, you're absolutely right. Sometimes you have to think big. In order to come up with that vision and then start figuring out how to fund it. I think Tony was alluding to that when it, he was talking about the needs assessment. The whole point of the LCAP, when we converted to LCAP back in twelve thirteen. Is it was a shift from looking at how much money do you have and what can the money support? That was the mindset that public education had for forty years. The LCAP shifted it to do a needs assessment. What are the needs? What are the vision of the district? And then figure out how to take the money you have and support that. And that's, I think, what Tony's kind of alluding to with looking at what are the needs and the desires and the vision. And the board's already set a lot of the vision and the priorities, but. Kind of doing it from a needs assessment perspective, and I think our arts education is the same way.
So I think what, I mean, what I'm hearing so far is, you know, some kind of ad hoc committee that is rooted, connected to LCAP in some way. But having major stakeholder groups represented, teachers, staff, parents, board, students. And community partners. But then also. In that process, having some kind of opportunity for broad community input. And I would agree with Sal, you know, in multiple venues, multiple mediums and some kind of a survey. But it sounds like, I mean, I'm just reflecting here what I'm hearing. That it could be guided, it could be led by an ad hoc committee that's connected to LCAP. Does that sound?
But you summed it up quite well.
And is there anything on on your minds that's more? You know, here are some things that we really want that that group to focus on or. Or in the alternative, it could be. We give you an update. Let's say we give you an update in late October, early November, and then we bring back a final and then allow for some conversation then after those are the process.
I mean, I know there's certain things I really want to see and I I pretty much express it. I mean, I'd love to see a super U. For the visual and performing arts. As a drama teacher, I just know how the arts keeps kids in school a lot. I'd also like to see an avid program. Those are the two things on top of my head right now.
Well, I have something that's kind of specific. I don't know. But I think it would be related to the learning recovery. Um, and the class size. And. Before the Great Recession, they had a state grant for ninth and tenth grade English and math.
Yes.
Which was maxed out at twenty to one. And so. As a district, we we added science. But it was maxed out at twenty three to one. And so it got them, you know, the the idea is that you get them on the right track when they come into high school. In these core classes and they don't fall so far behind. Overnight, it went up to thirty three. To one and you immediately. It's quite shocking. And if this money could go to something like that, I mean, it would be. It it would absolutely address. You know, the needs that we have in those ninth grade students and maybe extended to seventh and eighth grade. Whose classes are too big. But there are those pivotal, you know, grade level. You know, that would be something that I would really love to see.
I got my first teaching job because of class size reduction.
Right.
And. The difference in my freshman classes, because they went from twenty. To thirty three, to be, well, not that big, but well, no, this was before I was at Thomas and. Just the difference, the way you could reach students, the the responses, the writing development. They were, it worked is what I'm trying to say, I guess.
No, I love that, especially I mean. It's been inequity has been mentioned a couple of times. I mean, when you look at like the AP and honors of like naturally have smaller numbers. And then like the regular classes are up to thirty two or thirty threes. I think that would, that's a great idea. Yeah.
Especially English is such a cool thing, law and math and science and all of those are what.
Yeah, all the dashboard gaps that we have in our LCAP report are, it sounds like the first two funding sources could, you know, perfectly align with those.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then also as we look at. Like diversifying the curriculum and I know eventually you have to do ethnic studies. I would love to see like the PD targeted to that because it's one thing just like to add books. But if people only know how to teach them in a culturally relevant. And responsive way, that's just going to do more harm to students. I would love to see PD along those lines.
Love the diversity in our area.
Anything else? Alan or Julie? Oh, yeah, Kayla. I figured she's.
I'm good. Yeah, good stuff.
Okay. Glad you're still there, wasn't sure.
Lots of money for libraries.
So my hunch is, you know, like, you know, Matthew was saying, the normal LCAP process doesn't get going till October. And so we call this ad hoc group. My guess is some of those folks are going to want to participate and that's great. But, you know, like Manny's saying, let's, it's also, you know, cast a wider net, have a call for participation among the broader group.
I agree and having family, you know, especially when we know that one of, I mean, we have the. The Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, which is has a very wide net and you have the arts, music and insurance material block where you have. You know, especially if you, the way that we put it out there, a lot of families and parents. Teachers, classified staff members, administrators who are students who are interested in specific. Like this is, oh, my gosh, I'm really interested. This is, I have a vision or I have an, some ideas to give it. I think we'll, we'll, it'll kind of tend to bring in a group that's passionate about about that, so.
Exactly. What about, remember when we did that community board?
I was just going to bring that up. We did that, right?
You know. Yeah.
Doing that spring. On our calendar.
Is it on? I was just thinking about maybe something a lot around that where we would.
We were located, yeah, I mean, when there was a lot of participation.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it was right after you guys.
That was four years ago.
Yeah.
I thought we talked about doing that like.
And that's spring. Calendar.
Yeah.
And I think the committee too, right? The whole point of the committee, I mean, there, it can, it can be whatever size we need it to be that we get to invite, you know, there could be a committee meeting where it's. Hey, we're looking, we're going to send out a survey. We want to have, we want to have a lot of voices. Please come in and and share your perspective. So that the committee can make a recommendation to the board, but they can hear from lots and lots of people. And two board members, I think you saw my Friday app, Jim, looking for a couple of board members in this, and we can have two or threes, two board members on. Yeah. On the committee too, whoever's interested from them.
It's exciting.
All right, anything else? Any other comment? Thank you, everyone, for putting this together and for the presentations and the information and for the public comments. Thank you for coming out. All right, future business. Looks like we have a school safety presentation and communication strategic plan. On the twenty seventh, and if I could add something, I would love to see at some point like Chris had mentioned, all the COVID funded positions. That are going to go away.
Yeah, maybe we can do that on the thirteenth.
Or the twenty seventh or over something.
Or maybe.
We're, we're, we're working furiously on closing the books.
Okay.
That we have to bring on the thirteenth. But after that, we absolutely can. Can repivot and and look at providing you with, because part of the closing is, how much do we have left? It's the two thirty or July first, which is going to inform like what are we funding this year a little bit? So, yeah, we can bring that back.
Yeah, because I think a presentation at a board meeting would really go to form.
Yeah.
It's going to be important to know how much that is because honestly, as much as this sounds like a lot of money. Oh, when you spread it over three to five years. And remember, we got twenty one million in COVID funds that are going away, so. It's, it's, it's exciting and it's really good stuff, but it's not as much money as, as I think we think it is. So.
I also maybe we could late October so that we can inform the committee as well. Sort of, these are things that we have, we want to save or we want to pivot, want to shift. This is.
Well, and that's how much do things cost? Because I mean, it's one thing to say you like the eighth and ninth and tenth grade class size reduction for core. How many teachers would that take? And what's the cost of that, an estimate? Because that could eat a full million dollars right there depending. And so that's kind of what we need to do is look at the cost estimate of some of them. So it's going to require data for us to look at master schedules and say, okay, what are all the cores? How do they look? How many FTE would it take to reduce us down to twenty to one? So I mean, some of it's going to be data that we're going to have to look at. All right.
I have something.
No, go ahead.
I was just wondering on the school safety presentation. Um, I've been talking to a lot of. Community members and and parents about safe routes to schools. And how dangerous it is, especially certain streets. And and encouraging. You know, bike riding and walking and, you know. So is that, could we, is that, would that be relevant to the school safety presentation or should I do it separately? As a, as a future business?
Let me think about this. So Mike and I have been working on this, the the school safety presentation. She's, Mike, I don't believe. We can certainly put in a safe route to school and kind of talk, talk it through. This one, I think, is more about. It may be, we may be able to work it into this.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion. And actually, I will want.
The other challenge with safe routes to school is it's usually two to three years of planning with the city.
Oh, absolutely, because it has to be with the city, but the city didn't even, I mean.
Yeah.
And the county for Pengbro.
People just don't stop and stop.
All right. Julian or Helen, anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, so what does the school safety presentation? Yeah, so what does the school safety presentation like cover? Like what is it mainly?
The idea for the school safety presentation is around, there's been a lot of conversation around, particularly around gun safety, new legislation around from Governor Brown's office around gun safety in schools. What, what role do schools play in that? Thinking about our own schools and our children and your, your peers, when they're at school, do they, you know, they feeling safe? We've had actually students come and present to the, to the school board. So it's kind of pulling in, pulling in a lot of those aspects together and figuring out what can we do as, as a school district? What's within our power to do? Looking at schools, you know, and I, I hear you talking about the safety, safety committee. Looking at schools, what's the low hanging fruit? How do we improve, you know, without doing the whole presentation right now? How do we, how do we, how do we, what are the things that we can do right now in our, all of our schools? Make sure that, you know, there's again equity around our schools, making sure that we're doing, we have similar safety procedures in place, school safety plans. There's a whole lot that we could, we could do with that, but that's kind of the idea right now is around, particularly as it pertains to, you know, Texas and gun safety. Where, how do we prepare ourselves? We want to, we want to be in a best, best position possible for making sure that our schools are safe.
So like, is it going to come down to the level where there's going to be presentations for like individual classrooms so that like each kids and teachers can, you know, get that learning and preparation and everything?
It could be, it could be, Julian, and that, I mean, I'd encourage you to be part of that school safety committee. It's really, you know, I think part of it is looking at each school site. So looking at, looking at Sonoma High School, looking at San Antonio, looking at Casa, looking at Grant Elementary School, looking at Valley Vista. Are, you know, is there anything that we can do and, and not just relying on, so I'm not, I'm not like, it's for a principal, but it's not like I'm a, I'm a school safety expert. Where are the experts that was having part of that committee and looking at a critical lens? Because things change over time, right? So.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I was like, it'd probably be kind of a good idea to get some experts on it, whether that be like gun safety experts, like a police officer maybe, or a fire department people just in case for like fire safety, since we are in California. Just getting everyone prepped, getting maybe some of those guys to give all the students and teachers more of an in-depth thing of how everything works and how to look for certain things or something and to just, again, be prepared for that kinds of situations, worse comes worse. Just so that no one is like left out and then if something like that does actually happen, you know, there's, like, people have a good sense of what to do and what not to do, especially, so that everyone can keep safe and hopefully avoid any possible like injuries or other stuff like that.
At our last meeting, Mia brought up a program that she's part of and she's going to be part of that presentation as well.
So.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned. I don't have a gavel, but.